We have no action on closed session items. So we will move right along to board members' reports, the activity report, Ms. Helliger.
Thank you, Madam President. This is November fourteenth Board Meeting Report. Clemens High School orchestra rehearsal with Kurt Moiser?
Moiser.
Moiser, okay. Community program and parent university for Willeridge High School and McCullough Middle School, Economic Development Council meeting, Fort Ben Education Foundation Sugar Shindig, Gulf Coast Area Association of Schools, Tasby Business Education Forum, Audit Committee meeting, meeting with Commissioner of Education Mike Morath, Bush High School and Rich Point High School playoff football games, Rich Point High School production of The Wizard of Oz. Those were some great pictures I saw. Thanks. Yeah. Fort Ben chapter of the Lynx Tea and Fashion Show, had a great time. Legislative Committee meeting, attendance, boundary and planning meetings, all region choir concert, Ridgemont Elementary School Sparks Park dedication, Gulf Coast Association of School Boards November meeting, National School Bus Safety Week at Hodges Bend Bus Terminal, Fort Ben Chambers Legislative Update with State Senators Huffman and Colehurst, Go Public Gulf Coast Meeting, volleyball playoff games for Austin High School and Rich Point High School, Fort Ben ISD Twenty First Century Furniture Expo, Student Leadership 101 Session One, Austin High School Girls Sports Signing Day, Marshall High School Commitment to Graduate Ceremony, elected officials reception at Safari Texas Ranch, Donna Borch for State Board of Education event, Elkins High School's Science National Honor Society.
Thank you, Ms. Helliger. We have had a lot going on for the board members. Next will be special reports. Do we have board members with special reports? Mrs. James?
Yes, I have two special reports. One is I'd like to say that I was out today at Ridgemont Elementary School and the Spark Park that was installed was dedicated today. And we had state representatives there, we had city council and Larry Green who donated a lot of money to the park. We had County Commissioner Grady Prestige was there who also donated a lot of money to the collaborative effort. And it was just a great scene. The kids, the kindergartners let us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the choir sang the National Anthem. And it was just a really nice event and an excellent showing of collaboration between the City of Houston, the county, and Fort Ben ISD. And I hope it's just the first of many collaborative efforts with the Spark Park Organization because this was a great showing. So thank you to the staff, Mr. Perez and whoever the staff was that was involved in getting that going. That was really, really terrific. My second report has to do, I'd like to commend the various athletic teams that have been in the advance to the playoffs. And we've all read a lot in newspaper about football and I'll mention that in a minute. But I also really want to do a shout out to the volleyball teams because Austin High School and Rich Point High School were in the volleyball playoffs and Rich Point advanced to the regional semifinals, which I might add was, the regionals for volleyball for this section was held at Wheeler Fieldhouse, which was a big honor for us. And the athletic department did a great job hosting that event. I attended a couple of the matches and I just want to do a shout out to them. We had schools from several districts here playing volleyball. The Ridge Point girls were eliminated in the semifinals, but it was really exciting and they did a really good, they had a really good showing. And they're a very young team. There are a lot of freshmen on that team. So we could be seeing a lot of good things from Ridge Point volleyball in the future. We have a lot of football teams that are still in the playoffs. I wanted to shout out a couple of student athletes, though. Kelton Goffney from Willeridge High School was honored in the, as a High School Athlete of the Week in the Houston Chronicle a couple of weeks ago. And that's quite an honor because people from all over the region are nominated for that. And that's pretty exciting. Also, Alec Carr, the quarterback at Kempner High School, was honored by KPRC and I think some of you have seen that. And we have two scholar athletes being honored this week by the Touchdown Club. They're finalists. That's Luke Metzer from Dulles High School and Drake Lamb from Kempner High School. And they're both being honored as scholar athletes, finalists for football by the Houston Touchdown Club. So we have a lot of great things going on with our kids. So thanks for letting me make that report.
Thank you, Mrs. James. We appreciate that. The board is very proud of those and I appreciate you highlighting them. Okay, we have no additional, Mr. Berdine?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. As a construction liaison, I met with Mr. Bassett, Mr. Hollyhead, Mr. Perez and Dr. Dupree a few weeks ago. We had a great meeting as always. I wanted to thank Oscar for his presentation earlier this evening. That was, that was great about our facilities maintenance. I also wanted to say I attended the Bond Oversight Committee later that evening. I was really impressed. It had been some time since I've been to one. I expected it to be short. It was over two hours. There was lots of really good questions, lots of great oversight, lots of great involvement, lots of good participation. And I was really encouraged by the work that's done in that Bond Oversight Committee and thanks to those that are involved with that. And it made me feel good about what it is that they do and all the good work that they do just helps us up here. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berdine. Appreciate that. Okay, if we have no additional special reports, we will move on to item 11, which is the consent agenda. We will be removing for action item 11B and C. And Dr. Dupree, did you have additional items to pull?
Yes, ma'am. Item E, 11E, 1 and 2.
And I'd like to say item A as well.
Oh, thank you. I, actually, I intended to say A and B. I apologize for that, not C.
Okay. I'm good with A and B.
Okay. So we're going to pull items, just for clarification, items 11A and B, not C. And those are for action. But Dr. Dupree, you're pulling items E1 and 2 off the agenda.
On consideration, yes.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move to approve the consent agenda item as presented with the exception of 11A, B, and E1 and 2.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. We will now take for consideration item 11A. And if you, I understand, Dr. Dupree, that we have at our, on the dais with us, is this an update?
Yes, it's a correction for one of the school's First Colony Middle School had issues with the electronics, the technology. And so we wanted to provide an updated version.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. With that update, may I have a motion?
I move to approve item 11A as presented with the one correction to the First Colony Middle School plan.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion on this item? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. We will now consider item 11B. May I have a motion?
Move to accept item 11B as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion on this item? Mrs. James?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Tossan. I have a couple of questions on this. I know we talked about it last time and I'm kind of, have soaked on it a little bit. I guess one of the things that when I started looking at all this information altogether, some of the student data and all these performance objectives and all of this, I started to realize that I didn't see how we were addressing maybe some of the discipline issues that are noted and also achievement gap issues. And there seemed to be some disparity also in the discipline numbers with regard to race. And so I just wondered if somebody, if that is addressed someplace or if that is a work in progress or how would you, what do we, how, is it in here and I haven't seen it? Could someone address it, please?
I'll be happy to address that, Ms. James. I want to first start off by saying that this is our first time to really engage in this district improvement planning process to this level in quite some time, if ever in the recent past. And so we have realized through this process, as I alluded to last week, that we have improvements to make in the improvement planning process. And so as you, as you reference achievement gaps, that is certainly one area at the district level or the high level where we need to, and we will be more purposeful as we engage in this process next year in identifying that. But having said that, I do want to draw your attention to, or back to, the campus improvement plans because we, we've discussed and acknowledged through the, through the improvement planning process that, that each campus has identified their needs at their campus level and addressed those achievement gaps in student groups at the campus level in the campus improvement plans. And so at the higher level of the district improvement plan, we've really focused on across the board improvement for all student groups. But of course, we're taking heed to your feedback and to your questions and know that we need to improve in that way and make sure that we're addressing at a comprehensive level for the district each individual gap.
Yeah, so, and I appreciate that because I think I asked this question last week and you responded similarly while we're, you know, we want to address that. But it doesn't become clear that it's such, that it's an intentional addressing. If we're raising everybody's achievement three points, then we're not helping our most needy kids to catch up, which is what I think this board would like to see in that we want to make the gaps less. So thank you for mentioning that and, you know, we can think about that, you know, going forward and maybe figure out a way to address that better.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, how about discipline? Is there anything in there? Only because I saw the discipline disparity in that so many of our African-American kids and Hispanic kids are, seem to be having trouble with discipline and absences. And so, go ahead.
Okay, so discipline is in the Performance Objective 18 and we're focusing on decreasing the number of placements for discipline in ISS and OSS, particularly at the secondary level. And you saw, you know, some of those numbers that, that we're looking at on a nine-week period. And there's some activities behind that in the district improvement plan that support that increase, or decrease, excuse me, the decrease of 5% across the board. And that's in collaboration with the Department of Student Affairs, some work with district social workers to provide continuous support and programs that address key areas of discipline. Restorative discipline is one of the approaches at the middle school. There's some why try strategies at all Title I schools. And then through the Department of Learning and Support Services, we're increasing district participation in school-wide foundations, which is one of the positive behavior intervention systems through an intentional communication and training plan. Again, the same department is guiding campuses to identify guidelines for success and identifying target common areas to increase appropriate behaviors. And then we're implementing and training restorative discipline at 14 middle schools and 12 designated elementary schools and monitoring that discipline data to see if we're making an impact in those areas with those programs.
Okay, well, that's really good to hear because I've heard very positive things about the restorative discipline process and I think that is definitely preferable towards just the, we want to reduce the numbers of referrals. Because sometimes the unintended consequence of that is, is that a student who needs some intervention is not referred or not written up or whatever, just to keep the numbers looking good. And that's, you know, a little bit of anecdotal data that has come back to me has expressed some pressure to not write kids up, not send referrals. And that's, I don't think that's a fair or good approach. And so I like the restorative discipline model and certainly the teacher training model, helping our teachers and staff. You mentioned the foundations program. But just developing some cultural awareness and some diversity training and sensitivity training. I think this is an area that we could use some help and some work in because I'm concerned that when we see this kind of disproportionality, it may be that our adults are just not equipped in the right way to help the kids in the way that they need to be helped. There may be other things, reasons, too. Unengaged students because they're struggling academically or because they're absent and then they're lost in the material or whatever it might be. But, and that's why I had sent the question in earlier about the correlations because when I see absences and then discipline data and it all seems to line up, I think, okay, well, there's probably some correlation here if someone were to dig down and look at the campuses. So what would you say, could you just go over again what the training plan, if the, is there staff training? You said the foundations program. Was there anything else that I missed?
Yes, there is. I had some more extensive notes. I beg your pardon for just one moment. I did, we worked with the Department of Talent Management and then our Steve Shields in the area of student support. And they provided me with some extensive feedback about, I think it was called drop-by-drop teacher training that really looks at that cultural sensitivity and cultural responsiveness to interact with kids. And all of our first-year teachers this year received that training, our new teachers to the district. They're currently working on an online opportunity that will become mandatory training for every staff member. In addition to that, at the leadership launch this year, all leaders across the district received training on cultural responsiveness, as was the theme throughout last year in our C squared meetings at the, at the district leadership level. And then there's also, you know, in place, the No Place For Hate campaign and the training that comes along with that and support that comes along with that. We're also bringing in, I believe it's either in June or July, Pedro Noguera to talk about equity and work with staff in that way.
Excellent. Well, he's an excellent speaker, so we'll look forward to that. Thank you very much, Mrs. Martinez.
Thank you.
I might just add, if you don't mind, on the No Place For Hate, I was just informed last week that we have 100% of our schools registered to be schools of the No Place For Hate. And that's the first time Fort Ben has had every single school participate. So we're excited about that.
Thank you, Dr. Wetbeck, and Ms. Martinez.
Well, I'll comment on that, too. Thank you. That was, that's very good because as we've heard, bullying continues to be a problem in our schools and our kids are concerned about bullying. They feel bullied at various times and they observe bullying. And I'm just familiar with the, with the student data. So I would just say that it's an area where we need to continue working and educating adults and students with strategies to help with, to help them with bullying and with just working with their peers. Because it's so important that they learn how to get along well with others and work with others. That's, in the end, they have to graduate and be able to work with everybody and not feel intimidated and know how to stand up for themselves. And I just feel, feel very strongly that we have to, that's a never-ending journey. We have to keep working on it.
Thank you, Ms. Helliger.
I would just definitely, first, you know, second, everything that you just said, when you, when you asked the question, you think that your board members would agree. We definitely do agree with the statement that you made. I couldn't say it any better. And the only thing I would like to add to that is that expectations, high expectations. One of the things that, you know, I noticed with, even with my own child, is that he knows that I expect certain things, where he has somebody that's looking for him, is looking at his grades. And within the school system, especially for those who we know that may not have the same type of support system at home, we need somebody there that's expecting that they're going to do well. And not just giving grades out and, you know, saying, this is your test, this is your grade. But someone that's, someone is coming back and saying, no, you can do better than this. And I think that's, you know, a piece that, you know, we could do, do better. It's just not just the quantitative, here's your grade, that kind of thing. But where, where is the true expectation from with that child to make that connection with that child? When my child looks at, comes and he's looking at, he takes my phone as soon as he gets in the car and says, look, I passed this. I got, I got my, got my A or got my B, you know? And, and pass is not even a word I like for him to say, you know? And so really truly working with all of our teachers and setting those high expectations. Pass is, pass is one thing, but pass is not where we need to be. Okay? So I just wanted to add, add that. So it makes a difference in my child, so I know it make a difference in just about anybody's child.
Thank you, Ms. Helliger. If we have no additional discussion, please vote. Motion passes. Moving on to item, to our action items, 12A, this is approval of the superintendent evaluation instrument. May I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move to approve action item 12A as presented.
We have a motion from Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion? Mrs. James?
I have a question about the numbers. I know these are the same numbers we just approved in the, in the district performance objectives. But I wondered, particularly when we talked about attendance and graduation rate, those numbers look really high and I wonder if that's really realistic? Or if that's a goal, if that's a high expectation, as Ms. Helliger was saying, or if that's really realistic? And maybe some background behind where the numbers come from.
All right. So part of the comprehensive needs assessment was looking at that trend data from the past in order to shape the performance objectives and determine what is that growth measure that we wanted to look at. And so in terms of the graduation rate specifically, that is a 3% rate, which in that particular performance objective is somewhat of a stretch. Based on trend data, there was a 1.5% increase from 92% for the class of 2014 to 93.5% for the class of 2015. So the stretch goal doubles that 1.5 to 3%, reaching for a total of 96.5%. And that's one of the areas that we know and staff knows and has developed some plans around will be a challenge, but, but really wanted to go for that doubling of that particular data to make a difference and impact the graduation rate. Part of that is improving student attendance and, and putting prevention in place to proactively keep dropouts from occurring. And so for the, for the work with attendance, there's already been quite a bit of work with Dr. Guillory's staff in looking at data errors in particular that have already greatly impacted the attendance data. And that's not even, you know, talking about getting, getting the kids at school and engaged, it's strictly looking at the data. But there's some significant things that are in place with school counselors and dropout preventionists, as well as social workers. They're targeting the dropouts through a TEA mandated delivery system of guidance curriculum, individual plan, planning and responsive services. And being funded through Title I and Title II, they're implementing research based on the check and connect dropout prevention model for transition and in Title I middle schools and district-wide LEP immigrant with secondary students to kind of get proactively in with those groups of students and assist in keeping them in school.
Is the attendance number unexcused or non, or is it include, inclusive of excused and unexcused absences or the reverse of that?
Right. It includes the students being at, at school. So it includes all of the numbers. And one of the things around that that was from an ADA perspective was kids that were leaving for a doctor's appointment, for example, were being coded as absent but excused. But that is not an absence, it's coded as medical and we would receive funding for that. So just on the number side of it, that had a great impact. Has an impact.
And how about the student achievement goals? Is there, again, that was out of the district assessment, you felt that those were achievable or stretch goals, or where would you categorize that?
Staff believes that...
Let me interject. I think, Mrs. James, one of the things I would point out is these are, this is, we're really setting baseline. And I think I'm very comfortable with having any of these be stretch goals for this year because we're calibrating. And then with the understanding, we all know, even as you're considering this, we're going to make progress and we may, we may blow through some of them in a big way and we may not even get close to some of them, but then that'll help us in future years really make sure we're setting them more appropriately.
Okay, and that's, that's kind of what I was getting at because I agree. I mean, I'm very great glad that this is here and I'm glad that there's numbers and I'm, I really, it helps me to exactly calibrate versus just setting an expectation of getting better at something. We actually have a concrete number that we're working towards. And I just wanted to try to have a sneak preview, if you will, of is this, how realistic is this versus how much of a stretch is it? So what I'm hearing you say is that it is, we're still calibrating and we're not really sure. So it is what it is and we'll just go for that and then, and then look at the numbers from now and see what happened.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Having no additional discussion, please vote. Motion passes. Item 12B, this is naming of the new Career and Technical Education Center. May I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve action item 12B as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mrs. James. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Oh, I'm sorry. You're hiding behind Mrs. James's computer. Mr. Rosenthal?
I would just like to say, as a member of the naming committee, I think this is an excellent choice. I think there was clear consensus around the name and I think it's well deserved. And I hope we approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Hearing no additional discussion, please vote. Motion passes. Item 12C is approval of naming of the new Ag Center. May I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve action item 12C as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mrs. James. Do we have discussion? For Rosenthal?
Hoop that thing out of the way. Why don't you get a normal one like everybody else?
I have a lot of advertisement to do online, so I need a bigger space.
Yeah. Okay, so I would say the same thing. This was a good consensus from the naming committee. I think those, those are very, those of us who know Mrs. Beard know that she's a, she's a really strong lady. I know Jason knows her a lot better than I do. But I mean, she's a legend in the state of Texas as far as agriculture education. I mean, she really is. And it just, it's a great name. It's a great fitting name. It's a great honor for her. And I think it's a great honor for the district to have her name on this new center.
And will you announce the name for us, Mr. Rosenthal?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's the Bonnie Beard Agricultural Center.
And why don't you go ahead and announce the name of the previous, of the CTE Center as well?
Oh, we didn't do that. It was the James Reese Career and Technical Center.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Berdine?
Not to, not to cut in, but I believe Ms. Beard was the, I don't want to misspeak this, but wasn't she the first female ag teacher in the state of Texas? Which is really remarkable. We're lucky to have her, so.
Yeah. And just, you know, what, what a lot of us learned about her was that, didn't matter, I mean, she's at Dulles, but it didn't really matter what school you were at. I mean, she would help anybody. So just very proud of that name.
I think she probably knows literally every ag teacher in the state of Texas at every high school, no joke. If not close to it.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Rosenthal, for serving on that committee.
I just wanted to add something there because I thought it's very nice to see that the naming committee is going within our community and finding the right people and finding our own heroes. And I'm very impressed with that, rather than going, we have so many people outside, but within our community. So I'm very impressed with that. I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. If we have no additional discussion, please vote. Motion passes. Moving on to item 12D, we will take these together. Approval of three easements. May I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve action item 12D, 1, 2, and 3 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mrs. James. Do we have discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Helliger?
I will be abstaining because of Centipor Energy. I would be abstaining because of standpoint of energy.
Thank you, Ms. Heliger. We have no additional discussion, please vote. Motion passes. Moving on to item 12E, this is approval to pursue the designation of the District of Innovation.
Madam President?
Mr. Rice, go ahead.
Were you finished?
Yes. I was going to say, may I have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I move to approve action item 12E as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion of this item? Motion passes. Item 12F, this is approval to appoint the local innovation committee. May I have a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve action item 12F as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mrs. James. Do we...
Do we have a list of who, is that what we're approving?
If I could be the board president.
What are we approving?
Do we have the list of committee members that, or are we, at this point, we're approving formation of the committee and not the specific members to the committee? Is that correct?
Correct, and directing the superintendent to report the names at the December 5th meeting.
Oh, I see.
Thank you very much, Ms. Martinez. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Item 13, which was reviewing future board meeting agenda items. Dr. Dupree?
Yes, as you can see, there's a number of reports scheduled for December. We're going to do the public hearing on the first, that's our Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas report. We're also going to discuss the A through F accountability system one more time. It says on this document, we're going to discuss the nine-week student data update. We did that tonight. This was prepared before, the team worked so hard to prepare for tonight's meeting, so we will not be including that on the December meeting. But we will be discussing the dashboard, curriculum audit, assessment plan update, and attendance boundaries in December, along with a number of action items that you can see related to the bond program and other key areas, and like naming four more schools.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. Do we have any questions from the trustees on this? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.